For January 23, 2007. Roll call, please.
The record will show that all members are present.
Okay, clarifications of items on the consent calendar. Councilwoman Gardner?
Nothing.
Councilwoman Deagle?
None, thank you.
Councilman Webb?
I think that I had some concerns about item 10, which is the Newport Ridge Park, and Councilman Curry has indicated that he will probably recommend the item be continued, so I think that that answers my questions.
Okay, well, make sure you remind us when that comes up later this evening. Councilman Hen?
Nothing.
Councilman Curry?
Yes, I will be asking that item 10 be continued at the request of the homeowners and in consideration of Councilmember Webb's concerns.
Very good. Mayor Protem Sellit?
I have nothing.
And I have nothing. Moving to item number two on our study session agenda, the residential parking issues associated with the Ocean Boulevard and Peninsula Point beach areas and police responses to incidents for these areas. Before we get going, let me just, since there are, I assume, most of you are here for this and not just to attend a study session out of the interest of, the procedure we're going to follow here is we're going to get a staff report. It's going to take about a half hour. We'll be hearing from our city attorney, from the police department, and I believe, who else is going to be speaking? Administrative Services. That'll take about a half hour. Remaining hour and a half will be open to residents who want to come up to the podium and discuss this issue. This is a study session. At study sessions, we do not take votes on things, so nothing will be decided one way or another this afternoon. The council members can give staff direction as to how they would like to proceed after receiving the information and listening to the public, and I imagine that'll occur towards the end of the session. So with that in mind, why don't we begin with the staff report?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council, and members of the public. This afternoon, we're going to use our study session from 4:00 to 6:00 p.m. to try and get our arms around what a residential preferential parking program would look like and what it would feel like and how it would be implemented. What we will cover in the staff presentations, and like you said, we intend for the staff presentations to take no more than 30 minutes, and that's without questions. If you have questions, it would take a little while longer, but just try and paint the context that might be helpful to both you and the residents regarding this particular issue. We're going to talk about the problem, why we're here, going to look at what the two locations are and how we do the map and send the notices to, going to look at parking control alternatives that are used citywide already. We have some. Look at what the general plan in the LPCs, LCP says, and City Attorney Robin Clausen will talk about that, including the role of the Coastal Commission and what other cities have tried to do that have to get Coastal Commission permission. Captain Klein is going to talk about police enforcement from the standard, from the position of the police department in terms of, you know, what an enforcement program would look like. We're going to talk about residential parking program alternatives that might be available, likely administrative and cost issues. Lois Thompson from Administrative Services is going to provide that information. We'll end up with what's next and for more information. Why we're here. You know, the beaches close every evening. Residential neighborhoods are adjacent to the beaches, so the people that were noticed were the Baboa Peninsula Point and Corona Del Mar residential neighborhoods. They're close to Ocean Boulevard. Because there are numerous problems, as everybody knows, some of them are seasonal, but really year-round, according to the residents. And residents have asked if a resident-only permit decal parking program could be implemented in these neighborhoods during curfew time from 10:00 p.m. to 6:00 a.m. The two locations we're talking about, as far as Peninsula Point is concerned, it's from D Avenue to the wedge. The notices were sent to those homes. And as far as the Ocean Boulevard, this is reporting District 44, which is used for police statistical purposes, but it is basically coastward of Bayside Drive and along PCH from Coronation to Poppy. Parking control alternatives that are already used citywide, parking meters, we have over 2,600 of them with varying time limitations. We have annual permits that are sold to the public. In effect, we sell about 4,000 permits annually for different meters at different costs. We have prohibitions against parking during street sweeping periods. Normally, those are four hours, although not all of Newport Beach is covered by that. Other alternatives include parking lots that are available to the public at both beach areas. We have residential preferred parking programs in two areas that have been ongoing for some time. One is Newport Island, which we called Zone 1, that was established as far back as 1981, and Newport Harbor High School in order to help the residents that live around the high school make sure that they can park in front of their houses and all of the street parking isn't used by high school students. At this time, I'll turn it over to City Attorney Robin Clausen, and I think Patrick Alfred, Senior Planner, is also involved in this presentation. Robin?
Yes, thank you, Mayor, members of the City Council. The institution, as the city's done in the past, of a preferential parking plan is authorized under the vehicle code, the state vehicle code. So there's no prohibition on the city instituting such a program. However, because both of the areas that we're looking at are in the coastal zone, the city's local coastal plan, and there are also are some general plan provisions that apply to the concept of putting in place a preferential parking plan in these two areas. The circulation of the general plan recognizes the lack of public parking in the coastal areas of Newport Beach, and it has goals or policies that are set up to initiate a type of an in-lu fee process to provide for more parking where needed. So the general plan's looking at the lack of parking in, particularly in our coastal and our beach areas. The recreation element also recognizes that the public has access rights to the beach, and it also has a goal to provide access and parking. The local coastal plan does allow for a preferential parking districts so long as the city would comply with the goals and policies of the local coastal plan. And because the coastal, the local coastal plan provides this, because the Coastal Commission and staff have always determined that a preferential parking plan is a form of development as the Coastal Act defines it. And the basic reasons for development are the fact that you're putting up signs because the vehicle code would require that if you're going to put in place any type of a program, you'd have to have adequate signage and notice to the public. And then, and that's considered development. And then intensity of use or increased intensity of use, the changing of a parking program, they actually determine as a change of intensity of use of property. And then the last reason why they say it's development is because one of the provisions in the definition of development is a change in access to. And one of the things the Coastal Act looks at is not only access to the beach, but to views of the beach and along the beach. And so to the extent that particularly, I would guess, along Ocean Boulevard, we've got an issue of people walking along the beach there, that would be another access issue that a preferential parking plan would play into. The LCP, like I said, does permit this, but the coastal development permit, in order to do it, we would probably have to go through a process to support our LCP and to get the information to the Coastal Commission to support the reasons for the request for the preferential parking plan. And then we would have to show the Coastal Commission that the plan would not have an impact on public access. And that could be as easy, particularly in this case, because I think most of the issues are not a lack of parking, it's more safety concerns and nuisance concerns that the residents have. So what would probably be really important would be a survey or a study to show during the hours that's being requested, the 10 to 6 hours, I think that the residents and everybody are looking for, that there isn't really an impact on public access during those periods. And that would be some sort of a survey or a study of how much of the public actually goes to use it. And I think one of the things that are highlighted, to the extent that there is a problem with nuisance, the public doesn't have a right to access the beaches to commit a nuisance or to break laws. They have a right to access it to walk along the sidewalk and enjoy it like everybody else. And that's what I think is the effort that we would have to put forth to support the need for this parking program.
Robin, can I ask you a question? Is access required when the beach is closed?
Well, the issues are different depending upon the area. I think it might be different down on the Peninsula Point because the beach is closed and there really isn't a walkway or anything along there that provides a public view. But along Ocean Boulevard, that's different because there is the ability for the public to go and walk along Ocean Boulevard and enjoy the view, even though they can't go down and be on the beach. So in that case, one of the things that the Coastal Commission would look at would be a study for the reasons why the parking permit is requested. And then the other thing they would look at would be survey data to show that if there are any impacts, let's say there's a study that shows that some people do come and want to use it, that that, those impacts have been mitigated or alternatives have been shown to give them that type of access. So, where are we now? Kind of talking through the, yeah, that's fine. So these are the, these are the elements for a local coastal program, for a Coastal Commission permit, which would be consistent with our circulation element. These are the elements of our plan, our goals and policies that any program would have to support. So coming back to the council with any type of an ordinance instigating it, would have to have these types of, these types of information in it.
Robin?
You made the point earlier that the LCP isn't certified to get the implementation plan, so we don't have a certified LCP. So what is the legal status of all of these policies, then?
We have, this, this policy has been approved. This is our policy, and we have to follow it. The certification means that we are not certified to issue our own permits. So if we institute any type of a program or we do anything, we have to follow the goals and policies that are written in our LCP at this time, because that's what we, the council has adopted it.
Okay, even though our total LCP hasn't been certified?
No.
Okay.
Because the, what hasn't, the total LCP hasn't been certified because the implementation plan has not been approved in place and certified so that we can issue our own permits. But the Coastal Commission would expect us to follow the provisions of the LCP that we took to them and had them approve, and the council has adopted as well. Okay, so I think I kind of went over a little bit what we would expect to hear from the Coastal Commission. They would be looking at, have we looked at all other alternatives to this preferential program? They would be looking at studies to show that there is no impact, or if there is impact, that those, that those have been mitigated. And if they haven't been mitigated, and I think it'd be important for us to have those studies, because I think the Coastal Commission, if we went ahead and did it without them, would assume that there's an impact. So it would be good to show what the demand is for public access in these areas at night, in the middle of the night, to show that there isn't really an impact, or if the impact is just the demand for people to come down and commit crimes, that maybe we don't have to mitigate it quite so much. If the Coastal Commission-
Robin?
Pardon?
Excuse me. If the beach is closed at 10, how do we measure the utilization of the beach after 10?
It isn't, I'm not referring to the utilization of the beach. I'm referring to people needing to have parking in the middle of the night to go down to view or have access to the beach, even if it's like in Peninsula Point, to go down and look at the street ends and see the beach.
And the boardwalk is open as far as the peninsula is concerned, so that is not-
Yeah, so the Peninsula Point might not be an issue. That's another point that we would raise with them. The Peninsula Point's not so much an issue because there's already alternative access. There's the parking lot down by the piers, there's the two piers, so there's other ways for people to view the beach. But again, going back to Corona Del Mar, one of the issues will be the ability for people to view and have access to view the coast at night. But access to the park is not the issue that they would look at. So, but showing that, you know, some sort of study showing, particularly, I would think in the summertime would be the time, I'm just saying that I think the Coastal Commission would assume an impact. So the more studies and the more the information we can provide to support our program, the better chance we would have of getting the Coastal Commission to approve it. And then if, and the other reason for that is, is that if they do assume an impact and we don't show that there's not one, then they'll start looking around and start requesting the city to mitigate those impacts by enhancing access, maybe even during the daytime, or even in different areas of the city. One of the enhancements might be improved street ends down in Peninsula Point during the daytime, or bathroom facilities. I, you know, you never know what they'll look at, but the more that we can show them that we've done all our studies and we've established the need for it, and that the fact that the public really isn't going to be hurt by the fact that, that they can't get down there, go to the beach. The other thing that it might reopen is the closure of the beach. Now, I think that there's probably enough information on record over the years and the number of years that this has been closed, and the other, other cities that have allowed to close their beach, that, that we would be able to fight back on that, but it might set up some sort of a, kind of a reinstituting or a reproving our case to them for closing of the beach, because we'd make the argument, well, the beach is closed, so there's no reason for them to have access to it, and they'd say, well, where did you get approval? Or, or why did you, why did you close the beaches during those hours? And so that might raise more issues for us.
Robin, down coast, we've got about three miles of beaches and state parks that the public is restricted from, and it's a great viewing area. The public can't park, you can't get on the beach, you can't get on the bluffs. How's that any different from what we have here? And apparently, there's no problems restricting parking down there from the public's access?
I think that would probably be a good question to ask staff when the time comes up. I also understand that up and down, you know, the State Beach and Huntington Beach, and Huntington Beach, they're closed. So, and we actually have more alternative nighttime access to the beaches along the boardwalk and our parking lots and our piers. So there is alternative access for the public to go to the beach, just maybe not these beaches at night. So what I'd like to do is have Patrick, Patrick Alfred, Senior Planner, did a little investigation into what have, what has the Coastal Commission recently approved, and what were the conditions, and what were they looking at when they did that? So that's in the City of Carmel and the City of Coronado. So I was going to have him go over those two, unless you have any other questions.
Mayor Rosensky and, excuse me, members of the City Council, we went through and looked back at a number of actions that the Coastal Commission did on reviewing preferential parking districts over the past 20, 25 years. What we concluded is that the Coastal Commission will consider these things, particularly if there is an external impact, say, parking caused by a nearby commercial district that's impacting residential areas. Most recently, they considered a preferential parking program in the unincorporated area of Isla Vista, which is adjacent to UCSB, and all the obvious impacts the university had on the residences there. But in each of those cases, the Coastal Commission looked very closely at whatever was to grant relief to the residents, that it did not impact public access to the coast area. And typically, what they've done this in the past is either demonstrate that there is ample parking in other areas, or alternatives, either in lots, parking structures, or nearby streets. Or in some cases, if it's been demonstrated that the impact is minimal. That is particularly the case in the impacts during the late night or early morning hours. But I think it's safe to clear that any preferential parking program that is intended to keep people from legitimate use of beach areas, even in the evening hours, would be somewhat, would be an uphill battle and presented to the Coastal Commission. I think that the case, the two fairly recent cases, one was in the City of Carmel on an area called Scenic Road, which is very similar to the Ocean Boulevard situation. This is a case where the Coastal Commission actually had, I mean, pardon, the city had a parking program in place since 1986. But then in 2000, they applied for a coastal development permit to actually formalize that. They ended up withdrawing their application and apparently tried to address it in their land use plan. They, in their, in their application, they pointed out that there was already a curfew on use of fire rings, but the Coastal Commission replied back that basically you didn't consider other uses, such as fishing, stargazing, and just a midnight walk along the coastal area. So they obviously considered that. And in the end, they did curtail the hours, so basically they had to have the residence-only program effect only in the very late night, early morning hours. A similar situation is in the City of Coronado, just recently, just in November. This wasn't a preferential parking program, but it was a curfew of a beach park that was literally, you know, abutting or residential area. The city was certified, and so they approved their own CDP, but the coastal, two Coastal Commissioners appealed that to the Commission. And again, the city presented crime statistics, pointing out there where there was a crime problem. The Coastal Commission acknowledged that, but they didn't think it was of a level of significance to curtail use of the park during the evening hours. And so that, again, they limited it to the late night, early morning hours only.
Good afternoon. I'm going to cover a couple areas. The first one will be what our current enforcement policy is in that area, in both the Peninsula Point as well as Ocean Boulevard and CDM. And I'll follow it up with what our staffing needs would be for the implementation of a preferential parking program, as well as the signage that would be required to be able to enforce that. Currently, both areas are patrolled by a variety of officers in patrol cars, four-wheel-drive vehicles, bicycles, and all-terrain vehicles, particularly on the Peninsula, Peninsula Point. They patrol both the beach area and the street sides, and they look at quality of life issues as well as criminal activity. Generally, they will contact people that they see in that area on a consensual basis to find out what's going on. A lot of times, they can escort people off in that way. Close to 60% of the crimes that are encountered in that area are as a result of the officer-initiated activity that's occurred by our officers. In CDM, the majority of the issues we have center around Ocean Boulevard and CDM Main Beach. Officers routinely throughout the night patrol Ocean Boulevard, and again, it's by a variety of officers that go through there at different times of the night. At 10 o'clock, when the beach closes, or as soon as we can, depending on what our activity level is, we try to get officers in there, sweep the beach at 10 o'clock, and clear everybody out for the night. This summer was a little bit different, and then we had some construction at CDM Main Beach, and in the past, where we'd been able to lock the gates at 10 o'clock, not allow anybody in, we weren't able to do that. So it became a little more difficult for us that, in addition to clearing the beach, we have to go down and clear the parking lots a few times a night. Early in the summer, we were aware of the concerns for the citizens, the disruptive behavior, so we started putting more of our resources down there. We started clearing the beach with groups of officers. We'd get four officers to go down. We'd try to make a clean sweep of the beach at 10 o'clock to ensure that no one was left, as opposed to having one or two officers that had done it in the past. We also started implementing the use of our helicopter to identify the use of the fire rings or anybody on the beach after 10 o'clock. It was a better use of our resources, particularly when you look at Little Corona, it can take an officer a half hour to walk down there, check the beach, and come back up, and typically do it in two for safety reasons. So by using the helicopter, we're able to direct that service down there when there's a more likelihood that it was needed. Of course, every time we try to implement something, it affects other people. We started getting calls from some of the residents about the noise of the helicopter being down in that specific area. We're able to mitigate that, those concerns, by explaining what we're doing, but you can see, while it benefits some people, it has an adverse effect on others. Currently, several departments in the city, including the Police Department, are working on the final stages of the CDM parking lot to ensure that it's got proper lighting and it's secure for the people down there, as well as the officers that are clearing the beach. Again, we're trying to balance the needs of keeping the beach clear, the safety of everybody involved, and not imposing on the residents, minimize the impact. Because ideally, the best thing to do would be light the whole beach up. We can see right away what is there, but that has a negative effect on the residents. They don't want to have the light shine in their, in their houses all night. So we're trying to balance the two aspects. In both areas, though, both Ocean Boulevard and the Peninsula Point, the majority of contacts for criminal activity are the result of self-initiated activity by the officers. If a preferential parking program were implemented-
Captain Klein, I have two questions.
Okay.
Can you elaborate a little bit on the difference between quality of life issues and criminal activity? That's one question. And secondly, spend a little bit more time being more specific about the actual patrol activities on the beach down below Ocean Boulevard, especially where, contrasting the situation on the peninsula where there are mechanized ways to get up and down the peninsula as opposed to over in Corona Del Mar. So if you could comment on those two, I'd appreciate it.
Absolutely. Criminal activity, obviously, would be anything that's a violation. Could be our violation of municipal codes for being on the beach, could be drunken public, could be robbery, anything, anything that's in the penal code. When I talk about the quality of life issues, I'm talking about the gathering of people that might be surrounding a car and talking at 2:00 or 3:00 in the morning on Ocean Boulevard or on Peninsula Point. Technically, it might not be a violation of law, and there's no, there's no laws that you can't stop in front of anybody's house and have a conversation, but it affects the quality of life for the people involved. Ocean Boulevard is very common for people to sit in their cars and look out at the view. Again, not a violation of law, but routinely, our officers will go and contact them, find out if there is any criminal activity going on, and again, try to ensure that the citizens of the community is not disrupted by the behavior of the people out there. So it's a fine line as far as the quality of life issues, but we try to address both, not just the criminal activity.
Captain Klein, I had a question. Where, and maybe we haven't examined this yet, where, because I was kind of interested in your sense, where do you think these visitors are parking that are on the beach after it's closed? Where do you think they're parked?
In Ocean, on the Ocean Boulevard area, the majority-
They go to the Corona Del Mar State Beach.
The majority of them are parking, during this past summer, someone were parking down the ocean, the parking lot because it was open. But for the most part, they're parking along Ocean Boulevard from Lookout Point over to Inspiration Point.
Thank you.
I still needed to follow up on my second question, which was the patrol activity.
On the Ocean Boulevard area, again, we have officers that will get out on foot and they'll clear the beach at 10 o'clock, and they physically park their cars, and they start at one end of the beach and walk across, particularly if they see activity. And they do that several times throughout the night. They'll park on Ocean Boulevard, they'll walk down the steps, go down to Pirate's Cove, and a lot of this is based on, they make educated guesses by where cars are parked, whether they're, they think somebody's going to be on the beach. At Pirate's Cove, you'll see there's steps leading up to Ocean Boulevard. Typically, if there's a car parked right there by the steps, it's a reasonable chance there might be somebody down on the beach after hours. So officers will, generally in teams of two, will go down and walk the beach. It's fairly, somewhat easy to clear the main beach. The areas that are more difficult are Little Corona. Like I said, they have, they have to hike down there, down the path, the maintenance path, and Pirate's Cove, where they have to climb up over the rocks to get down. But they do that several times a night.
Another quick question. When you do find people on the beach after hours, and I'm not talking about like 10 o'clock when you're just kind of moving them off, but say 11, 12, 1:00 in the morning, are we ticketing them, or are they just asked to leave, or what's the procedure?
It's a variety.
Is that an officer discretion thing?
It's an officer discretion, and obviously, you know, we, the officers, make a determination about whether the person is causing problems or not. And they'll make that determination. If it's a large group of gang members, then obviously, you know, everyone is going to get a citation sent on their way. If it's a different group, it might be handled differently. It kind of depends on what they think the potential for additional crime is going to be.
Thank you.
Captain Klein, we have in front of us correspondence from the community, particularly in the Ocean, Ocean Avenue area, about vehicle vandalism, graffiti, gang kids hanging out, you know, people leaving stuff in their yards, that kind of thing. How would you characterize those types of complaints? Is this just a bad summer for attracting bad people in this neighborhood, or is this a recurrent issue? And from the enforcement perspective, what have we learned about this activity in that, specifically in that neighborhood?
I guess it depends on the, the level of activity we're going to have. This is, I've been here 27 years, we've always had this type of activity in that area because of the attraction to that, to the community in general. What we're, what we learned is that because of the beach, I think we encountered a little more problems. I thought, I think there also was a heightened awareness of what was going on in the community's part, and it became an issue, and they started vocalizing more issues. Many of the things that were discussed have not been brought to our attention. Obviously, the best thing for us would be every time something is seen, a group is seen, for them to call us and we can respond. seen, for them to call us and that we can respond at officer. We respond at officer to every single, uh, call for service we got in that area. So the more cooperation we can get, the better we can respond to it. But it's not unlike other crime areas, or, uh, areas of crime. The Police Department by themselves is not gonna be able to address every single crime, whether it's vehicle burglary or vandalism. Uh, it requires some active participation from the community to alert us to what's going on, so we can use our resources and direct them to the areas that need to be done. Officers coming through, no matter how many times an officer drives through that neighborhood, he's still only gonna see a limited amount of activity that's going on.
John, when, uh, when this issue first came to my attention, the end of last summer, one of the complaints was that in Corona Del Mar of people being down on the beach after the beach closed. So I, uh, I took it on myself, uh, at the end of August and a couple of Fridays in, uh, September and October to go down there around eleven to eleven-thirty, and, and I observed each of those times numerous fires down on the, on the beach there. I mean, the majority, if not all, of the fire pits in some of those nights were, were all going. So if we're going down there clearing the beach when, uh, when, when it closes at ten o'clock, why would those, uh, fire rings still be going that late?
Well, obviously, they shouldn't be, and, and there are gonna be nights where, depending on the police activity, we're not able to, uh, get, free somebody up to close the beach right at ten. We should be down there every night. I know specifically, I, uh, directed some of the supervisors to, to get teams and do the ten o'clock sweeps with four to five officers to ensure that we got that. Uh, are we getting it every night? Probably not, um, but I think we're getting the majority of the time. And there's always gonna be times when, uh, we don't get to it. But, but again, um, when I looked at the calls for service in that area, there was an increase, um, of calls for service, particularly related to fires on the beach, and every time we got one of those calls, we sent an officer down there to clear it. So, yeah, there's gonna be times we don't see it. If we get the call, we will break somebody at that point and respond to them down there.
Captain Klein, question for ya. Uh, let's say we were to do a resident-only parking on Ocean Boulevard, you know, then it would seem they're gonna start parking up Flower Streets. What kinda area are we looking at, uh, that we would have to do this resident-only parking to prevent people from going to the beach? Would we have to go up to PCH, or what are your thoughts?
Well, there's a natural break. If you look at the, uh, Ocean Boulevard area, um, it would be west of Marguerite, there's a natural break at Bayside where there's that hill, um, and defines it, and then the rest from Marguerite. I would recommend that it would be just shy of, uh, Pacific Coast Highway, far enough off Coast Highway so it doesn't impact the residents, or, I mean, sorry, the businesses. My concern with, um, the residential parking is pushing people off of Ocean Boulevard where they're, they're fairly visible for us, and we can drive down the street and identify them, um, up into the, uh, the residential streets. But that would be my recommendation, that we, uh, do that entire area to try to minimize that as much as we can.
Thank you.
If you look at the, uh, staffing for the Police Department's staffing needs, um, the implementation of a preferential parking restriction program cannot be done without an enforcement component. Uh, to do that enforcement component, I don't think it's reasonable to use police officers to do that. Uh, it would pull them away from their primary duties, trying to address some of the quality of life and criminal activity that is occurring, and also, they're not gonna be able to dedicate the time and effort it needs to do that enforcement correctly. Um, I would recommend that we, uh, have that enforcement done by our parking control people, similar to the parking enforcement they do, uh, during the day. Unfortunately, currently, we don't have park patrol people working in those hours, but to do enforcement in that area, whether it's Peninsula Point or Ocean Boulevard, it's gonna require a, a park patrol person to get out of their car, walk up and down the street, try to locate the, uh, um, the permits before a, a citation is issued. Um, to have one dedicated, one PCO during those hours each night to bounce between each hours, or be, between each location, is gonna give us the enforcement that we need at the level we need it.
Captain-
So we would-
Captain Klein, how many times a night might a parking control officer actually go through the neighborhood if, uh, there was a dedicated parking control officer? Every hour, every two hours, or?
My guess, between the two areas, we're probably gonna get them to go through each area two to three times. Uh, and that would be street by street, kinda in a pattern to go up and down the street, at least initially the first time, and then follow it up. Obviously, the second, the third time, they might have a better idea of what cars they looked at, and, but I would expect that each area would get hit two or three times a night.
Yeah, you probably have, I don't know, I'm gonna say at least a thousand cars that, uh, and it probably is more than that, that are going to have the permits to park there. And sorting out the permit versus non-permit can be, I, I can understand, it'd be quite time-consuming, right?
And, and it's also, um, gonna be affected by the, uh, the light environment, you know, which streets have lights, which don't, you know, what's more visible. Uh, but to, to hire two park control people to cover that area every day for a year, um, one person, one park control person per night, uh, the costs, the salary and benefits would be approximately a hundred and sixty thousand dollars per year. Another major component of the, uh, preferential parking program would be signage to ensure that people are aware of it. Uh, we have a couple different areas in town that already have restricted parking. Here's an example of Newport Island that has a, uh, resident and guest-only parking during the summer. You can see the size of the sign, uh, in relationship to the "Not a Through Street" sign, and these are gonna be have to, uh, be displayed in a variety of areas, similar to like the, the, uh, street sweeping signs. It's estimated within the Peninsula Point area, we would need one hundred and seventy signs. I'm sorry, um, Ocean Boulevard area would be a hundred and seventy signs to notify everybody, and in the Peninsula Point, it would require two hundred and twenty signs. And you can see what the sign looks like. It's usually attached to a pole that has other signs, but, uh, it's, tends to be larger than the other ones, and it depends what kinda verbiage needs to be on there to make sure it's, it's seen.
Okay, so, so on Ocean Boulevard itself, you might have, uh, one of these signs for every two to three houses on both sides of the street?
Probably every sign, a sign between every hundred, hundred-and-fifty feet.
Okay, so every two to three houses.
Yeah, you have to make sure that wherever you park, it's visible.
As you go up the Flower Streets, it might be, uh, every four or five houses-
Right.
-'cause those lot, lots, I think, are a little narrower.
Right.
And so does that, uh, your sign number, does that include doing the Flower, signing the Flower Streets all the way to Coast Highway?
I believe so.
And Bayside Drive?
Yes.
Okay.
Um, one other thing with the, uh, the signage, um, particularly in some of the darker areas, most of our parking enforcement is, occurs during the day where it doesn't require any additional lighting for the street signs, for the park enforcement signs. Lighting would have to be a consideration in the placement of the signs, particularly like in Ocean Boulevard and CDM where there's no streetlights. We'd probably have to look at that at, uh, you know, midnight on one night when there's a, with no moon to see if there is enough light, and we might have to look at some kinda lighting, uh, measures to ensure that the signs are visible to whoever comes into the community.
One other question. I noticed that, uh, in the packet of information we got and comments from people, uh, most of the comments that I see are related to damage to property, vandalism, uh, people on people's front yard or, or, or on their properties. Can you comment briefly how a parking restriction might help that, or will it do any good at all?
Well, where a parking permit, I guess the thought is that a parking permit would keep people from, um, coming to the area that might cause this damage, um, because they're not able to access the beach, they're not able to access, uh, some of the other areas. So by having a parking permit area, it would prevent them or keep them from coming into that area. Uh, if somebody comes into the area, obviously, it's not a, uh, it's, it's not gonna prevent crime if somebody actually comes down to the area. But if we, if they, if it reduces the amount of people coming down, it, it could reduce the crime. That's all, yeah.
Now, we're going to have Lois Thompson, who is, uh, from the Administrative Services Department, talk very briefly about likely cost and a few administrative issues.
Mayor and council members, uh, the, this is our total cost. We estimated about twelve hundred homes might be involved in these two areas, and so these costs are based on that. And so we would need two full-time community services officers. They would be at night, night shifts, and, uh, that cost could be a little bit more if we have to pay night differential, too, so that's not factored in. And, uh, signage design and production, that would be for three hundred and ninety signs and our own sign shop, so that they could probably make them at about twenty dollars a sign. Uh, the labor to install the signage, and that would be city labor also, um, to install the three hundred and ninety signs. And then we have to actually print, produce and print the permits, and, um, it does look high, but those have to be, it's special glue that it fits on to your, um, windshield. You, you've probably, probably seen the permits that we have in the city. Um, we might make them so that they reflect light to allow the Police Department to see them easier at night. Um, they can have barcodes, all those kinds of things on them, but they cost about a dollar fifty each to do. And so this includes thirty-six hundred resident permits, so that would be three per household. And then we would have to also have visitor permits, which I'll talk about a little bit later. And so assuming each household wants thirty visitor permits, um, for a year's time, that would be another thirty-six thousand permits, so that's how we get up that high. Uh, we have, we would have initial labor to set up the permit program. We have a, um, permit management program already in place in the city, and so that would, uh, cover the cost to have programming set up and, um, a consultant take a look at that for us. And then there's labor to issu, issue the permits, and that would be, um, people would actually have to appear in person at our counters. They do that now for Newport Island, and it takes about twenty minutes per person or per household to initial, um, to issue the permits, because we have to determine if they are actual residents, they have to produce, um, proof, and, uh, then we do the issuance of the permits for them. And then there'd be, um, an annual administrative cost, so every year you would have to reissue the permit. It would be like a new permit would go on, so that we could make sure we keep track that the correct people do have the permits. And, uh, that grand total is two hundred and seventy-one thousand, six fifty-nine. If you divide that across the twelve hundred homes that we assume would be in this permit program, just the cost for getting this program going would be about two hundred and twenty-six dollars, um, per household.
I have a question.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, those numbers don't take account of any offset by way of revenue associated with this program-
No, there's no revenue.
... fees and the parking violation revenue-
No.
... associated with it. Is there any way to try and make an estimate of that revenue offset?
Um-
There certainly is, as it relates to the issuance of the permits, but-
There, yes, I don't, no, I don't have any calcs for that at this time. It might offset some of the, um, parking officers' time up there, but then there still is, um, even when, there's citation management fees that go on, you know, and so it's not really revenue, you know, producing on this one, especially since the startup costs are gonna be so high. It'll, it's gonna take a while before it would offset it.
I wasn't suggesting that I thought it would pay for the cost of the program-
Mm-hmm.
... but it could be a significant offset, depending on, I, I just don't know the economics of ticket issuance and, uh-
Yes, and I, I don't have any of those factors.
What are annual revenues on, um, collecting from ticket citations?
I don't have that.
Robin, um, if, if I remember correctly, somewhere in the report, there was a, uh, something that said that we had to either give to the Coastal Commission or use any revenue we would get from the parking permit program to do something on providing coastal access or something like that, and we couldn't use it to offset the cost of the program? Did I read that right?
No, I think what, um, the idea would be that the coastal policies would say that we would show that, um, if any fees or excess fees that we would produce would be used to mitigate, um, any-
So it's just an excess of our cost?
It would be, yeah, it would be that. But to, to maybe help answering Councilmember Hen's question, I think the amount of revenue that might come from people violating it, parking down there, might be, um, give you a pretty good idea if we got an idea what the impact is. In other words, how many people are going down there and parking right now in the middle of the night? And so what is the demand to go down there? And so what is the likelihood that, you know, you have some number of cars violating the rule in parking without a permit? What usually ends up happening is that the people that get stuck with it is the guest or the person that came, or the person that lost their permit, or has somebody that probably shouldn't have been cited, and so then we're gonna have, we would have a process that we'd have to go through on, you know, the payment of that. So, uh, it, depending upon how many people actually go down there and would violate it versus how many residents would have somebody, uh, either accidentally violate or not have their permit on, or have the wrong car down there that night and get cited, and then come in and wanna, you know, rectify that or, or have to pay the, the fee, that would be something that we would have to work at. So I don't know which would, which would be, um, a higher offset.
I just wanted to discuss briefly some of the administrative details and, uh, just to make you aware of some of the issues that may come up with, um, administrative functions of it. Um, and if we did have a permit program, um, I want you to understand that, like, the residents would, um, the, the permits would have to be issued to a vehicle, and so that's the only way that we can track it. So not to a household, but to a vehicle. And, uh, so the, um, proof of address and a vehicle ownership would have to be produced whenever that person came to the counter. And so our staff, city staff, would have to determine that this person actually lived within the area that you designate, and that the vehicle was actually registered within that area. And so, you know, things can happen along that way, that it could be tenants, that they don't actually have, um, proof at that particular point in time, or maybe you haven't updated your address or your vehicle registration. So there's problems that can come up in there, and it currently makes for a very spirited discussion at our cashier's counter now with Newport Island, so that, that would occur. Um, we probably would have to limit the number of permits per address. I think that the council, the Coastal Commission, um, even encourages that, and then also having a tiered cost system so that each one costs more and more. They like that. Um, you would also have to consider the impacts of-
Excuse me, why can't we have, like, Newport Island, they have hangers that they hang on their cars?
Yes.
It's not, I'm, you know, it's not specific to the car, as far as I know.
They have one that they can move around. They have, they can get two affixed in one hand.
I see.
Mm-hmm. And it doesn't work, it, it's kind of a little different area in there, but we have lots of problems in there, too, where, um, people will take those and then give them to someone who doesn't live in the area, and so then they're there, and, you know-
Well, the big issue, really, is guests. I mean, you got, you have a dinner party at your house, and you got half a dozen friends coming over, and the party-
And what do you do?
... end at ten o'clock, and, you know, you have to go scrambling to your neighbors to borrow their permit, or-
Borrow their permits, uh-huh. And that was the next thing I was gonna talk to you about, short-term visitor permits. Um, and these are things that have been implemented in other cities, and that's why I have it up here, but you would have to have visitor permits for overnight guests, for like a maintenance vehicle that stayed overnight. Um, suppose you had a late-night social event that your guests stayed past the curfew, so now you need to have, um, visitor permits for those. And all of these, um, people could be subject to citation, and so then they're gonna show up at City Hall and want us to waive those fees, and we have to sort that out. And so, you know, the res, um, you should be aware that the residents are gonna have difficulty with their own guests and managing the parking at their properties. Um, long-term visitor permits, suppose, you know, you have Aunt Jane coming down for two weeks to stay with you, you're gonna have to get a long-term visitor permit, maybe two weeks if that's what we decide to have, and how many of those do you give per household? Do you let them have as many as they want? Do you only let them have three per year, you know, long-term permits? And, uh, then the other things to consider are people who have in-home care providers, you know, do you give them permits? Um, rental vehicles, suppose you get in an accident and you rented a car. Um, student vehicles, you know, you have a, a son or daughter's attending college, but they're out away, and then they come back, so you need to get a permit for that. So all of those things will come into play, and just wanted you to, to know that that adds into the administration of the program.
One question. Is it, excuse me, possible to, uh, tie into, uh, making sure that the parking that is required for a particular dwelling unit is actually used as a part of this program? In other words, if you have two parking places in a garage, can we inspect the garage and make sure that those places are available?
That, that has been done at other cities where they, uh, you know, they, they do it, require an inspection of the garages to make sure that they are, um, available for parking, and then issue beyond that.
Mr. Mayor, that concludes the staff's presentation, so we'll give up any more time so that the public has an opportunity.
Okay, well, first of all, does the council have any further questions of the staff before we open it up to the public? before we open it up to the public?
Yeah, I do. It seems to me that if Coastal Commission is going to be involved, then there's going to have to be a case, a safety case demonstrated here. And I think it probably is a good idea to try and do that in advance or along with an application as opposed to after. And the, but it also seems to me that the safety case is not properly demonstrated if we try to use average crime statistics for the entire city and compare that to the crime statistics for a particular area of the city, a residential area of the city. It seems to me that the crime statistics ought to compare one residential area to other residential areas. And my guess is it's going to look like a bit of a different picture than when you compare those statistics to citywide averages that include all of the activities that go on in the bar districts that we have spotted around the city and other commercial areas. So I would just encourage us, as we're looking at this, to try and have better definition with our crime statistics here, better basis of comparison. Seems to me the residents in these areas are entitled to have the same safety expectation as residents in other principally residential areas. So when we look at these statistics again, and we may well, I'd like to request that we have the right kind of perspective on that.
Okay. Well, we will open it up to the public now. And you're welcome to come down to the podium and you'll state your name, please. Just before we do that though, just out of curiosity, how many folks are here from Corona del Mar? And how many are from Peninsula Point? Okay, thank you.
Mayor Rosansky and Councilor Dennis Baker.
Yeah, and it is a five-minute time limit.
Keep it under that.
Sorry, Dennis.
Okay. My name is Dennis Baker. I live on Begonia in Corona del Mar. And I guess one of the things that comes to mind on this is sometimes you might get what you wish for and then not be happy about it. And I hope a lot of the people who speak to this after me might think about that. Because there were a lot of negative things that were indicated, like lighting, you know, additional lighting and stuff that some of the residents might not find really good. It appears to me, and it has been as I've been following, that this is an enforcement issue. And in other words, this seems like an indirect fix to a crime problem or a disturbance problem or so on. And I'm a little concerned about spending a lot of resources to resolve this problem indirectly. I would like people to be coming up here saying, maybe we ought to fund a few more police positions or fill the police positions that are open, that type of thing. Get more uniformed police down on the street. Historically, the captain has been here long enough, I've been here long enough, to remember when Newport Beach has taken some real radical steps for short term to control things such as Bow Week, large influxes in your district, Mayor. We have the 4th of July issue and so on. So maybe there needs to be first, an approach of taking some really strong enforcement issues, see if we can get a handle on this, before we put something as permanent in place as parking permits and so on. Thank you.
Yes, my name is Charles Unsworth. And my perspective is the Peninsula Point. I don't know anything about the Corona del Mar issue. I do not believe the city should take any action regarding the proposed restricted parking program that could involve the California Coastal Commission. If the city attempts to limit parking, the California Coastal Commission will certainly consider that action by the city as an impediment to public access to the beach. Once the California Coastal Commission becomes involved in this issue, it may well determine that, one, the 10:00 p.m. curfew violates the California Coastal Commission's policy of increased public access. Two, if public access is to be restricted by a restricted parking program, then alternative access to the beach is required in the form of perhaps even the extension of a bike path. And three, increased public access would, could require construction of restrooms at the wedge. In fact, once the California Coastal Commission becomes involved, it could require the extension of the bike path, construction of restrooms at the wedge, and the elimination of the current 10:00 p.m. curfew. The city should do nothing to involve the California Coastal Commission. Additional law enforcement without the involvement of California Coastal Commission is the best way to maintain and improve the quality of life of the residents here at the beach. I cannot imagine a positive response from the California Coastal Commission to additional restrictions on public access to the beach. Again, this could include even a determination that the 10:00 p.m. curfew violates its policy of enhanced public access. Once the California Coastal Commission attention is focused on our neighborhood, we will have no control over what the commission may decide is in the best interest of the public. Thank you.
My name is Marvin Nevin, and I live at 3312 Ocean Boulevard in Corona del Mar. I've lived there for 35 years. We've never had a problem. We don't know about any problems that they have closer to the beach entrance. But I feel that any signs on the beach would be counterproductive. We have been successful over the years in preventing any signs of any sort on Ocean Boulevard. Not even signs for street cleaning are there. Nothing, because it obstructs view. And we would appreciate the council's consideration in not placing any signs on Ocean Boulevard. Now, the people who live across from the entrance to the beach may have a different problem. I notice some signs are up there, and that's fine if they want them. But south of Marguerite, we feel that there's no need for any signs at all.
Mayor Rosansky, City Councilman, my name is John Hamilton. And I'd like to speak in favor of this. The problem here is a problem of safety. It's not a problem about keeping the public away. It's not, it's not intended to privatize the beaches for the local residents. Has nothing to do with national origin, race. Has nothing to do with property values. This has to do with crime and the safety and the security of the residents in the area. It's a need that many taxpaying residents who pay for the streets and the police need because their property is being damaged, because they are threatened and they are fearful of where they live. It's about fear, fear of gang crime, gang damage, and residents' well-being. It's about our safety and the reprisals from the same gang bangers that we may report to the police. This is something that we are concerned about. Someone has a problem at their house, it's gang-related. You turn on the lights and you, to try to stop this, call the police. They know who called the police, and the reprisals occur. We need this parking restriction because it's not a seasonal problem. This is not something that happens just during the summer months. It's a year-round problem. It may be even a greater problem in the winter months. Because the people that we are trying to keep from coming here are not the people who want to stroll on the beach, who want to look at the stars or stargaze or spoon or whatever it is. These are criminals that we want to keep out of the area. We're not trying to keep Aunt Sarah who's visiting. We're not trying to keep somebody's friend from coming by. We want the criminals that are parking their cars on Ocean Boulevard, on the flower streets, partying and then leaving their vehicles and going to the beach. The beach is closed at 10 o'clock. Cars are supposed to leave the parking lot. They don't, they haven't. And unfortunately, I can give you multiple testimonies of the fact that they haven't left and they haven't been patrolled. We have called and indicated this to the police on many, many occasions. Most of the gang bangers show up after 10 o'clock in any case. They don't want to be where there's a lot of people on the beach. They want to be alone. They want to get down there. And they're not being stopped by the police. And they can stop right on Ocean Boulevard and do their business or stop on the flower streets. Criminal activity occurs down there and on the Ocean Boulevard and on the flower streets late at night, and for you and I have gone to bed. They carry guns, they carry knives, and they carry other weapons. Our fears are not unfounded, unilateral or imagined, and are continually confirmed and reconfirmed by the officers who work the area off the record. I promise you that, because I personally interviewed numerous officers and they confirm this for me. These people have sex in their cars, sex in the driveways, sex on the parklawns, sex on the private property of the residents. They damage private structures and city improvements by breaking, shooting, painting, tearing, or stealing items from the neighborhood. You will hear tonight from some people about graffiti, destruction, and even defecation on the residents' property. We have to say goodnight to guests sometimes at our house. And as our friends enter their cars to leave, we see groups of people with coolers, 12-packs, and other bags of unknown contents leave their vehicles and walk down to the beach or Private's Cove, Big Corona, and Little Corona, after all the beaches are legally closed. The next morning, those of us in the neighborhood have suffered the consequences of activities such as broken bottles, bashed-out security lights, or even defecation on public and private property. These occurrences are disgusting. And what's worse is that we fear walking our guests to their cars, walking our dogs, or just getting fresh air as these people stand at their cars and glare at us as if we were the intruders. Some 200 residents, counting only one person per resident, have willingly and eagerly, eagerly signed a petition asking for this. We could have received many more. They're frustrated, they're afraid, and they're desperate. We are confident, despite of what you may have heard tonight from the staff, because I can take issue with many of those items, and law enforcement, that this not only will work, there is plenty of precedent for it in other coast sign cities. I'll be happy to provide you with some of that, as well as press on the Newport Beach. And it just may be revenue-neutral. Please look carefully at this. We're your constituents. We're the people you represent. We're the ones who pay the salaries of the staff. We're the ones who pay the salaries of the law enforcement and those who will implement this. We're asking you to listen to us. Please, respect our needs, respect our rights, and respond with a proactive protection and the relief that we so sincerely deserve. The last thing I will do is only talk to you about things that I am familiar with and the first person that have occurred to me. Yes, sir?
Well, your time is up, John. I know you're here speaking for a lot of people, so I'm going to give you a little bit more leeway here. But how much longer do you think it'll be?
I will just read very quickly.
Okay, thank you.
Within the last 18 months, which includes two winters and a summer, this is what I personally have been involved with at my house. Lights at my front gate has been shot out on two occasions with a weapon. There have been three occasions of multiple beer bottles being broken and as many as 24 in a case in the street, on the sidewalk, in the curb in the driveway, leaving dangerous jagged grass, it's been reported. Cars have been keyed twice. Once it was a car of a visitor spending the night. Intruders have entered my yard, through the gate, and damaged or stolen items or contemplated something, because I catch them, I open the door and there's someone there. Years ago, when our children were younger, living at home and they were going out at night, we were never concerned for their safety. I can't imagine that today. I'd be worried to death if my kids came home from a date and had to park in front of my house after 11 o'clock, as it is today. Thank you very much for your consideration.
John, could I ask a couple of questions? I know, because you've been, and you do have talked to so many of your neighbors.
Yes.
Do you think that if the, even though the beach is closed from 10 to 6, that permit parking were safe from 12 to 5, as say where they had made changes up through the Coastal Commission, would that have, still have an effect? Or do you feel like you absolutely need the parallel time as far as if there were a permit parking program?
As in any situation, I think there's some leeway. Obviously, we want to look at the big picture. I think 12 o'clock is probably a little late. But it's not the people who are, the nice families are coming and going to the beach. It's a public beach, they're invited, and we invite them and encourage people to go. It's the people who come after the hours. And they're not Aunt Jane, they're gang bangers.
And my second question, which we have also discussed, but it is an issue. The fellow who lives across Coast Highway, who does not have the permit and who does want to come down and enjoy the starlight at 10:30 at night or something, he doesn't have a permit. If there's a parking person, they're apparently going to be talking to him. What do we say to that person? That, I mean, he feels like he's paid for those streets too and everything, but he can no longer observe the ocean from Ocean Boulevard after 10 o'clock?
Well, my, I think, Councilman Gardner, I think that's a bit of a stretch because most people at 10 or 11 o'clock at night are bed.
Well, I know I am, but I'm just assuming there are others that are more romantic.
Well, if they're that romantic, then maybe they can sit in their car and watch. And I doubt very seriously that the police officers are going to come down and mug these people sitting in their car. If they have to get out and walk, it's pretty dark there as it is. And it's not exactly the safest place to walk, even, even without a criminal activity. But I...
To you, it's not an issue.
We need to think about the group as a whole, I think.
Well, as I say, that's one of my concerns, is all the other residents that for some reason may feel that there's an access right for them. Not so much the visitors, but just residents. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, John.
Thank you.
Nancy, I kind of agree with you. I live inland and I would like to have the opportunity to have a permit to come down sometimes myself.
You got the master permit, I thought.
That doesn't count.
That doesn't count.
My name is Lee Payne. I've lived on the Balboa Peninsula for 35 years. I think I'm glad I live on the peninsula rather than Corona del Mar. It may be that you're trying to solve one problem in two different places. In 35 years, I've never had any of this. I've never had any of our neighbors talk about any of this. So maybe there's two different problems going on in the, the one in Corona del Mar is not the one on the Peninsula Point. My family has contributed hundreds of dollars to the city in parking tickets for the alternate-day, street-sweeping nonsense. My own car has a garage. But whenever friends come to visit, they invariably get ticketed because I can't remember which day the sweeper comes. We live with this annoyance because we recognize the importance of keeping our streets swept and our bay clean. To add an additional layer of parking restriction on top of this, however, would be way too much. I sympathize with any people who've moved to the peninsula thinking it was a private gated community, though they might have done a little more research before they moved in. The situation, the solution, I think, is for those people to move to a private gated community. There are plenty of them around. But for those who did our homework, the peninsula's lack of exclusivity is one of its many attractions, and I urge you not to screw that up.
Good evening, Councilmen, Council ladies. I'm Louise Fuddenberg from Central Newport Beach Community Association. We did not receive the letter that went out to Ocean Boulevard and the Peninsula Point. And all we are asking is that when you do some more study that you will remember that Central Newport is in the middle and we don't wish to be left out. I'm not sure whether you want permits or we don't want permits. I have heard from constituents that we have problems down around Balboa Boulevard in the Balboa Village area. And there are problems off of Newport Pier at the evening. And people who have homes there can't find parking and so forth. But whether permit parking would be advantageous or not, I'm not here to say. I'm just saying, please include Central Newport Beach Community Association when you send out letters.
Hi, I'm Jill Schreiber, and I live on Ocean Boulevard in Corona del Mar. And I'm actually the one who started the petition almost a year ago because of the increased crime we've seen in our neighborhood. In doing that, I met a lot of neighbors and heard a lot of stories. And people were begging me to publish their story and hear their story and sign my petition. I had over 200 signatures in, on Ocean Boulevard and the flower streets, and only four no's. There was some in there that weren't home and/or they're under construction, and I didn't get any responses. But for the most part, I had over 90% yeses in favor of restricted parking. I don't even mind the trash. I don't mind people spending the night in their car, waking up and going to the bathroom in my yard. I'm afraid to live there at times. My husband travels a lot, I have a daughter and two dogs. And it's scary to sleep at my house at night. We've had vandalism, we've had people knocking on the door. I've had, woke up, it happens in my street, I live on Jasmine and Ocean, between 2:00 and 4:00 a.m. And I had six people shining little teeny like laser flashlights in my home at 2:00 a.m. I went downstairs to turn the light on. This went on for like a half an hour. I went downstairs to turn the light on, this went on for like a half an hour, and they're looking at the TV, looking at all this stuff. I called the police, and I think once I turned the lights on, they left. I've also had a homeless lady asleep in my front patio when I woke up one morning. I've had my car vandalized, blood all over the inside of it, trash thrown all over the place, and that was the same night, the whole Ocean Boulevard was tagged with graffiti, as well as several homes, all the signs and park benches right above Big Corona. So in my mind, it's a public safety issue. It's increased over the last several years, and I just feel that we should go forward with this process with restricting parking. There's also a fear of calling the police. Sometimes, you know, we get, we call, and there's, they're busy doing other things, there's fear of retaliation, and there is also, sometimes you think, well, this isn't going to last, these people are going to leave, and they don't. So I'm not so much worried about the beach being swept by four police at 10 o'clock, because these people come back late at night, and it's not people that live in the community. I've seen a lot of these people, because I look out the window, and they're not people that live around here. So anyhow, thank you.
I have a question. So how would you feel about the possibility of a trade-off, for example, if the Coastal Commission determined that the beaches couldn't be closed before midnight?
So the option would be keep it open till midnight, and then...
Have, if you were able to obtain permitted parking, but that it would only apply beginning at midnight, because the beaches were maintained to be open until midnight instead of 10:00 p.m.?
I would rather have that than what we have today, me personally. And one more thing on the signs, because the Flower Streets are just as bad as Ocean, because that's where people can hide out and not be seen, and there already are signs there, so putting up these signs there wouldn't be such an issue. The people that live on Ocean Boulevard that don't want signs, I only spoke to two people that didn't want them. Everybody else said, put them between the homes, they won't be, you know, as obstructive. So, thank you.
But it'd still be required, I believe, Officer Klein was saying, I would imagine it'd have to be on both sides of the street, and so there are no homes on the other side.
Well, most of that other side is red. There's, most of that side is, there's no parking anyhow, so, thank you.
One other thing, some of the problems that you mentioned, like, for instance, a homeless woman sleeping in your front yard, I imagine she didn't drive there to sleep in your front yard.
No.
I don't mean to make a joke out of it, I'm just saying that, because whatever we do, we want to address the problem. We don't want you coming back a year from now, let's say we institute a parking permit program, say, well, thank you for putting in the parking permit program, but we still have homeless people sleeping in our yards, and we still have people, you know, using lasers in our windows and things like that, and so whatever we do, we want to make sure we address the problem, not the symptoms of the problem.
Yeah, I guess that's, was another comment, when we talk about an incident of tagging, I'm not quite sure how a parking prohibition would stop that, because I'm assuming a tagger is somebody that's going to be kind of driving through and hopping out and doing stuff. If they see people around, they're going to leave, but, so that, even our parking permit program is not going to have somebody present 100% of the time. As we pointed out, it would be one person covering both the peninsula and the other area, and they might come by once every hour and a half or two hours, so there's a lot of time in between, so that a parking permit program will probably keep the law-abiding people out of the area, but it may not necessarily reduce the other people. I'm just making that comment.
I just feel like with the permitted parking, that people will get the word around to their friends, that you're going to get, you know, ticketed if you go in that area late at night. So sooner or later, hopefully, the crime will decrease.
Thank you.
Members of the council, my name is Kent Moore, and I've lived at Ocean Incarnation in Corona del Mar now for over 36 years, so I'm pretty familiar with this problem. And I'd just like to echo John Hamilton's sentiments, and quite frankly, it is disgusting. And you wake up in the morning and take a walk, you find trash in the street, condoms, broken bottles, cans thrown on people's lawns, sometimes you can see people that have camped out there all night, people sleeping in their cars or other vehicles. Now, I'm personally concerned about crime and safety, and I support a decal program. Please, we need your help. Thank you.
My name is Cindy Peck. I've lived on Balboa Peninsula Point for about 40 years. I also am glad I don't live in Corona del Mar, because I feel very safe there. I feel as if I could walk on the beach at 1:00 in the morning. I won't, but I think I could. I think that the crime that has been on our street, the few times that I know about, have been drive-by things, people, kids with bats broke windows on cars, some various other things. Permit parking wouldn't address that whatsoever. We had a situation a couple of years ago with the underground utilities being put on the ocean front alley, and we had parking permits, and it was a horrible hardship. It made everyone angry, it made neighbor hate neighbor, it was, it really was a nightmare. And already, just listening to the administrative person here, I got angst, thinking about, oh, my God, what am I going to do if my daughter comes and she stays late, or whatever. So I think we really need to consider our quality of life as it has been, and on the point, it's good. Maybe Corona del Mar is another issue. Thank you.
Yes, Mayor and City Council, my name is Dr. Ilmer Drews. I live at 3516 Ocean Boulevard, which is right across the street from Inspiration Point, and I just want to point out the problems that we have there, which are probably more intense because of the access to the beach there, and the fact that there's a park across the street with benches and places to sit, and then also just below that, of course, there's that other landing where there are a lot of benches and things. And I can assure, tell you with assurance, that the people that come there don't come to look at the ocean or the views, they come there for the sex and the drunk, and the drinking, and the probably exchanging of drugs. During the last year, I'm sure that we've called the police at least a half dozen to a dozen times, on the most severe cases, where people have been beating each other up, where women are yelling and screaming for help because of being abused in the cars or someplace, that just this last month, I know the police were there to stop a fight out in the middle of the street, and there certainly is glass in front of our house probably two to three times a week, and if you live in that area, you know that there are all kinds of runners that come there every morning, that are running in the dark along those places where there is glass and other debris on the street, and I know that once when I was running there, I hit a beer can and severely sprained my ankle and my knee because of hitting, you know, objects that were thrown in the street there at that time. So I'm not sure exactly what the problems are in the rest of the areas, but it's very, very difficult in the summertime to get a full night's sleep, I can tell you, because of the loud music and the screams and the fights and the people driving excess speeds and motorcycles, spinning their wheels and things in that area, and I sure hope you can do something to help alleviate those problems.
Council members, my name is Roberta Schmidt. I live at 1805 East Balboa Boulevard, and I have lived on the peninsula for about 34 years now, and I hate to disagree with Lee, but it is not a rosy community down there either all the time. We have had defecations, fornications, and also the stealing of patio furniture right off the beach from neighbors that have told me about the situation. And I do feel, I wish we had extra patrol officers down there, even a car just sitting there, maybe coming in, like the clean sweep that they're talking about, somewhere in the middle between 2:00 and 4:00 in the morning, and we've had some bad accidents down there. There's one that was reported, a car ran into the sidewalk, crashed into a fence, tore it down, and then they got away. And so we've had hit-and-run type things there, and I don't feel that we have a, I can walk the streets, but at the wedge, I wouldn't want to be there after 10 o'clock at night. We have friends that walk their dogs, and we have found cars that are parked there, and they go out on the beach and have their good fun times, and they go out after 10 o'clock, because they know the patrols have come down, cleaned out the beach, and now they're free to go. I would like to find out whatever happened to the internship program that they had for young police aspirants in the 80s, and I remember they had young officers that they were aspiring to be young policemen, and they were given parking duties, they could issue tickets, and maybe there's an internship program for university students that want to work at nighttime and clear, I don't know about the liability, but they had it in the 80s, and you may be laughing, but I got a ticket from one, from parking in the alley, from one of these young officers, and I knew the young man, and he gave me a ticket anyway. So I know it works, and so I don't know if that's a possibility, but you might think of some internship that would alleviate the cost of hiring extra officers. Corona del Mar has a much worse problem than we do, but we need more, I think, enforcement and patrolling. That's how I feel. And I live on Balboa Boulevard, I'm 4/10 of a mile from the wedge, and I have heard screaming women, yelling and screaming, and cars going by, and I don't know whether, I don't think they're residents, I don't think they're my neighbor's wife screaming. I know that these are visitors that are not treating the women very well, but this, and this is not down at the beach, this is on Balboa Boulevard. I find glass bottles on my lawn, and other few little things that I don't want to mention, they've been mentioned already, so I don't have to go into the details on that. It is safer where we are, but I think we need more patrolling. Thank you.
So, Mrs. Schmidt, may I ask you one quick question, then? So you're not, you are not speaking necessarily in favor of permitted parking, you're speaking in favor of more police enforcement?
I think I'd like to try that first, because the administrative costs are...
Try more enforcement?
Yes, first, to see if that would work. I think the visibility of police officers at certain points would keep people away, including maybe the homeless, or maybe the officer could take care of a homeless person and direct them to a shelter. But I think the visibility of a police car at designated points, even if it's a young intern, and they just see that car, they don't know he's an intern, or an assistant, or a deputy, or whatever you want to call him. That's my point. I would like to see patrols first, and then the parking, in all deference to the gentleman from Corona del Mar. I just thought that might help first, try it. Thank you.
I'm Philip Mark from Miramar Drive, near the wedge, five houses back, and I've observed the same type of thing that the previous speaker spoke of, and I'm not sure where the other man lives, on Peninsula Point, but it can't be anywhere near me. I've called the police on several occasions, most recently, three or four months ago, we were awoken at 2:00 in the morning by a fight outside. We went to the front window, and we saw people actually fighting. I called the police, and it took some time for them to come, and by the time they came, of course, the people had left who were fighting. I have called on other occasions where I've heard women screaming on Ocean Avenue at the wedge. I have had my front wall graffitied in the middle of the night. I've been tied into my home in the middle of the night by people who put ropes on the front door. I have had people defecate in a patio alley-type area on the side of my home, before I put in wrought iron gates to prevent that from happening, and it would have been a lot cheaper to pay the $200. But this is the sort of thing that's going on. Mr. Curry, when you were running, I don't know if you remember, but you were in front of our house, and we showed you that somebody had left a six-pack of beer from the night before. It just happened he was there on a Saturday morning, and, but that's, you know, this happens all the time. It's not unusual for us to get up in the morning and have to clean the front of the house. And for that reason, one Sunday, when, maybe some people should have been in church, but it was later in the day, my wife saw some young men, who looked like perfectly nice young men at first, leaving their garbage on our front lawn, and she, the windows were open, it was summertime, and she asked, in a very nice way, politely, if they would please consider the property owners and remove the material from the front lawn, and she was then bombarded with every four-letter word you can imagine, for which I called the police, and the police officer arrived almost an hour later. I want you to know that, because in the meantime, they continued this harassment. I didn't go outside, I didn't think that was a good idea, there were four or five of them, young, strapping guys, and I eventually, though, told them, because I wanted them to get out, that I had called the police, and would you believe that, I don't know, maybe they're not too afraid of the police in Newport Beach, because they continued to remain for about another half hour. Then they left about 10 minutes before the police arrived. The police officer then came to my door, identified myself as a resident who had called in, and he then asked for my identification and my driver's license, which I had to go upstairs and get, wrote my driver's license down, and I'll tell you the truth, I mean, I'm a retired administrative law judge, and I know the difference between taking a statement and being interrogated. I was being interrogated. So I don't know if the problem is the parking permit, I do know, we've apparently tried enforcement, haven't we, for all these years? Isn't that what the police officer here, Mr. Klein, Officer Klein, said? They've been enforcing down at the beach, and they've been enforcing, apparently it's not working, so maybe we do need to try something else. Maybe it will work, and I thought, I thought it was said that to be two patrol officers, not one, Mr. Webb, Mayor Webb, or Mr. Webb, because I thought they said two, and I thought it was going to be one at Peninsula Point and one at Corona del Mar, and you apparently only heard one, but I think it's two. So in any event, we've tried enforcement. Unless you can tell us that you have some other ideas on enforcement, let's try this. I was up at Carmel, I saw the signs, in fact, maybe that's where the city finally got on it, because I happened to mention it to some of my neighbors, and I don't know if the word got through, but they were doing this in Carmel, and it seems to be working up there, I think, and certainly you have the resources to check to see if it's working, why don't you do that? That's all I can say. But I do want to make a point, it's happening at Peninsula Point, as well as Corona del Mar, although I will say Corona del Mar sounds worse, but we've had the defecation, we've had the graffiti, we've been tied into our homes, and we've had people cussing at us, and we've had screaming, and we've been awakened in the middle of the night with fights, and I would like to see it stop. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and councilpersons. My name's Eric Welton. I've lived in Corona del Mar for about 40 years, and have raised four children there, and one of my admonitions to them as they were growing up was to not go down to Ocean Boulevard after dark, and the reason I mention that is because it was not a safe area then, and that was quite a few years ago, and I think the previous speaker makes my point that we've tried enforcement, and it hasn't worked, and so I'm a signature to the petition, and I, with all due respect to Captain Klein, I have to challenge his statement that the number of patrols are as frequent as he claims, because I think if I asked for a show of hands in the audience here as to how many times such patrols were viewed by residents, it would be a very small number, because I just don't see the police presence there of late in proportion to the rising number of incidents. And of particular concern to me is the graffiti. As, as the gangs have proliferated now in Costa Mesa in particular, it used to be that most of them were from Santa Ana, now there, there has developed sort of a turf war, and I, I wonder, Captain Klein mentioned that most of the police action was self-initiated, and he made that point several times, presumably to indicate that it was not a result of residents' calls. Well, the frustration that arises when you call and know that they're so busy that they can't arrive for an hour or so sometimes discourages you from making those calls, so I would like to know if, if graffiti removal is, is recorded as a crime statistic. Homer, maybe you know the answer to that, but it seems to me that, I know we hire, the city hires a private contractor to go out and paint it out immediately, and they're wonderful, they're very efficient at that. I've, I've called in, and by noon the next day, they're gone, but I have some pictures that I wasn't able to bring with me tonight, but some of those that have remained, right down the street, I live at Iris and Bayview, and right on Iris Avenue, there's a white graffiti mark that's been there for several months that hasn't been removed, and I, a couple of years ago, I will differ with my... And I, a couple of years ago, I will differ with my neighbor and friend, John Hamilton, that I think the problem started immediately after dark. I confronted a tagger trying to, reaching up. And this, this was a teenager, maybe 15 years old. He was trying to write on a stop sign. And I, with my bravado, I attempted to challenge him. And then some of his buddies started coming up and obviously I didn't want to pursue that any further. But we do have a serious graffiti problem and I think that's indicative of the gang presence and the increasing turf issues that, that derive from that. So I will, I support the parking restriction as a, as a means to augment the continued and hopefully increased enforcement. And let's see where we go from there. Thank you.
My name is Doug Brandon and I live on Oceanfront Boulevard near the wedge. And actually, I'm against the, the proposal for more control. One of the reasons we moved here eight years ago was that this place is just a wonderful place to live and it's not as many hassles as like places down the coast. And so we were happy to choose this place. And one thing I noticed, you know, in 1999 and 2000, 2001 was there was a lot of patrols on the beach. You know, these four-wheel drives would come down with lots of lights and people would be gone quickly. But lately what's happened is, is that I bought some of these night vision goggles, you know, where you can see what's out on the beach. I sleep with my, my window open and I hear the noises. And a lot of the concerns that I'm hearing about, about our area is true, that there's people there, they're noisy, they're, they're drinking. We've had people come up and lay down on, on our property drunk, you know, at night. We've called the police four times last year and the response time is somewhere between 20 minutes and an hour. And by that time, things have changed. But what I've noticed is, is that what we need, I think, is more enforcement and patrols along the beach. If you clear people off the beach, they really don't have anything else to do at this point and they'll leave. At least that's what I believe. So I would like to see more patrols and more enforcement of existing laws and no more hassle with, with parking permits and all that stuff. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Rosansky and members of the council and members of the city. My name is Kathy Hamilton and I would just briefly like to address two situations. I am speaking for a couple of my neighbors on Ocean Boulevard. One is my next-door neighbors who are not able to be here tonight. They, they have had graffiti, gang symbols, according to the police officer who took the report, sprayed on their private fences and gate and property. And the police officer told them, this happened two weeks ago, to please get it removed as quickly as possible because he recognized it as gang symbols and he said other gang members would be coming to spray or to felt pen, whatever it is they do, on their property in retaliation for the other gang members who had put it up on their property. As recently as last night, we have more tagging along the flower streets and on Ocean Boulevard. It's gang-related. We also have a neighbor that I'm also was asked to speak for, who came in from dinner with his wife. And this was at 11:15 at night. And two people who were parked in a truck in front of their house got out and followed him into his garage and started banging on his window and wanted to use his phone, that his, his truck didn't work. Anyway, he backed out, they jumped in their truck and they ran, okay? My next-door neighbors also had someone parked in front of their house who walked into their home at night in the dark and asked for a hanger that the lock on his car, that his keys were locked in his car. The lady's husband came up and the guy took one look at him and he ran. This is, these are not teenagers. These are not pranks. And they are happening after dark and they are people who are parked on our streets. If these people had to run for three, four, five blocks, I just don't think it would be as convenient for them to do the things that they're doing. Also, I was one of the several people who took the petitions around to the, our neighbors on the flower streets and on Ocean Boulevard. And I can't tell you how hard it was for me to get around because I got stopped by so many residents saying, "Thank you very much for all of you who are doing this." We, and they would tell me their horror stories. And they said, "We are afraid to call. We look out our windows and we see these people and if the police aren't going to arrive, we know that in the next night or maybe two nights, we're going to have retaliation." And you know, a lot of people in Corona Del Mar, myself included, are older. And it frightens them. They're, they, they are afraid of retaliation of these people. And I must say that, that if you are up there at night, 11 o'clock, 11:30, and you see these people standing around their cars and they are staring us down, you don't want to call the cops and walk in your house and call the police because it's, it's scary. Thank you.
Mayor and councilmembers, my name is Roger McKinnon. My wife Diane and I have lived on Ocean Boulevard for an excess of 35 years. I'd like to take this opportunity to just announce our experience with the local police department. I have not been, my wife and I have not been as fortunate as the Hamiltons or Mrs. Schreiber in contacting and getting some results from the police department. On the occasions that we have called to report noise and disturbance, fires on the beach in front of our house, we have been told by the police department that there's not enough staff to handle our complaint and that sending one officer down there is not going to do it. They need to send two and they, they don't have the manpower to come to our aid and handle the request. So although I am a signer of the petition that Mrs. Hamilton and Mrs. Schreiber have taken around the neighborhood and probably a few others, I support the parking proposal. But I think it's really a police patrol issue, at least for our concern. And I just wanted to make sure that I put on record seeing that tonight. Thank you.
Hi, members of the council. My name is Bambi Wilczek and I live on the Peninsula Point. I've been there for about 25 years. And one of the reasons I moved there was it was a safe, wonderful area to be. And for the most part, it has been. We do have some problems which you've heard about tonight. And in Corona Del Mar, it sounds like it is really horrendous at times. And when I was listening to Officer Klein and I was reading what was up here, it looked like with the parking permits, there would be two parking control officers, one a night to handle both areas. And now police officers. And the cost, the administrative costs seem awfully high, probably very realistic, high. And I'm concerned about, the other thing is the Coastal Commission getting them involved. It's a very scary thing because they do what they want. All they do is hear what we, you know, we have to present to them. I remember when we had a terrible problem on the peninsula, cruising. And it was horrible for several years. And then the police department beefed up and we had wonderful police presence and controls put in, even had the donut permit, which people remember. It was a nightmare for many years, but it eventually got the problem solved by having very visible police control of the area. And my, that's what I would propose, that in our areas, specifically at the point and also in Corona Del Mar, that some police program, very visible, very intense, be considered that might have a real effect and stop these problems. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, City Council. My name's Leslie Kazarian and I live at 3412 Ocean Boulevard. And I've lived there since 1998. And my husband has lived there since 1988. We have never had a problem. And I am not afraid to walk on Ocean Boulevard at night. There are people there that do not look like us. And there are, I'm sure, problems that my neighbors have experienced. But I think that we should be contacting the police and not restricting parking. The ocean, even at night, is beautiful, even if it's dark and you can't see anything. We should not restrict other people from coming down there. That maybe people have stayed at the beach all day long and enjoyed a fire pit. And then at 10 o'clock when the, the beach closes and they want to go up and, and sit in their car in front of my house and enjoy the moonlight on the ocean, I don't think that they should have to have a permit for that. I think that, like everybody else, we are concerned about calling the police. Are we bothering them for no reason? But the more we call the police, the more the police will hear us and come and patrol. I don't think having parking permits will solve any of the problems that we're having. These people obviously don't care about property or, or parking without a permit. So I think we should be calling the police and having the police deal with the people who are causing the problem and not have all of us who are not causing a problem have to amend our lives for the few that are causing the problem. Thank you.
Good afternoon, council. My name is Linda Maggard. I live at 232 Goldenrod. I am a fairly new homeowner. I bought two years, a little over two years ago. And I'm a single mom. And when I moved in, I had a son. My, my second son was home with me. He went off to college. He came home last summer and he has to park out on the street. And one evening, of course, living on Goldenrod, I think one of the trade-offs, I, I know Goldenrod, I think is the prettiest street, but it's also very, very busy in the summer. I get a lot of traffic. So this particular night, apparently around 3:00 in the morning, his car was vandalized. And I think we determined it was a hammer that smashed his rear windshield of his car, which he was very, very proud of and getting ready to go back to school in. So I'm very much for this permit proposal. I do think that we also need to beef up the security. I think this is a safety issue. I'm not sure having permits will solve the crime issue, but I think it will deter so many people that know that Corona, Big Corona Del Mar beach is very convenient. It's more convenient than the peninsula for people that live in and want to enjoy the beach. So it will possibly be a deterrent of bringing so much traffic into our area. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Barbara Peters and I live on Breakers Drive. And we don't want the beach open till 12 o'clock at night. As it is right now, when they come, when they do come to close the beach at 10, it takes a good while to get it closed. We'd be, if it was open till midnight, we'd be looking at 1:00. I wish, I wish, as the other woman had said, I wish the more I called the police, the more they did come. That has not been my experience. We've lived there eight years. I am a routine and regular phone caller. We're right down there, right at Big Corona. We see everything that goes on. The problem, in my opinion, is that when we call, it's treated as a noise complaint. It does not seem to have the same priority that other complaints do. And so sometimes it takes an hour, sometimes longer. I've called at 10 and not been responded to till after midnight at times when there are people down at the beach with fires outside of the firings, up and down the sand, racing through the parking lot, screaming gunshots years ago. And I would love to see the enforcement side of it be emphasized, but with the priority that it's not just a noise complaint. Because those same people that are down there making noise are then up on Ocean Boulevard doing all of this damage that we're hearing about. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name's Deanna Reposa and I live at 3728 Ocean Boulevard, which is on the corner of Ocean and Poppy. I too have been a very frequent caller to the police department, especially this last summer. I was on a first-name basis with the dispatch. I have young children at home. I've had to have very uncomfortable conversations with them at a very early age about sex, drugs, and alcohol. From when I moved there 11 years ago, was supposedly a very safe, quiet neighborhood. My family is very upset about the change, just especially over the last few years. We've been vandalized. We've had our lights broken. We just had a gentleman trying to get in last week and no response from the police department on our call. So we would be in favor of enforcement. I'm not sure how the permit situation ties into this, but anything at this point would be helpful. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, city staff. My name is Ken Drellichak. I live down on Balboa Peninsula in the 2100 block. And nobody else has done this, so if you're willing and interested, I have some photographs that I took, spring and summer last year, just occasional spattering of photographs that showed the kinds of situations we have down there, which we would like to get control of. There's graffiti, which I can't read, and there's lots of other graffiti photographs I have. And the graffiti cleanup program that the city has is amazing. You call, they'll clean it up and it'll be gone. And they've been terrific about that. But graffiti does exist. There's all kinds of trash on the streets overnight and you'll see pictures of it there. And you've heard some of them from John Hamilton, others. And it's wild. There are, there are fights. Nothing has happened that I have seen, but my neighbors have reported. Some of these get reported to police. Some are fleeting and happen too fast to get reported. But they do happen. And lots of other things happen down there that amount to public nuisance, quality of life. Maybe they would amount to crimes if they weren't so fleeting, but they happen so fast and they happen at late at night that none of us can get up, make a phone call, identify anything that's gone before you, you can do anything about it. But they do happen. I live in an area of speed bumps and one of the favorite things to do late at night with your pickup truck is to load it with something loose, hit a speed bump as fast as you can and set off all the car alarms right next to the speed bumps. That's one of the favorite things that people do in the middle of the night. My car has been parked in front of my house and it's been egged, stained with paint on the car. You can't do anything about that. It's after the fact. It happened last night. And by the time you realize what happened, it's too late to do anything about it. House next to mine was abandoned because the resident passed away. It was in real estate's hands, had spigots in front that people would come by and turn on, wash off, coming home from the beach. These are all happening at night, late at night. One morning I woke up and there was a complete river and a mud puddle in the street in front of my house and a street, and a couple of houses on either side of mine, they had turned on a spigot and left it open. That same house had been abandoned for quite some time because it hadn't sold right away. Somebody had found a way to break into the back gate and get access to water. We were awakened at 1:30 in the morning, one morning, to hear somebody spraying water around. Before we could do anything about it, they were gone. But the next morning, the gate was broken. It happened twice before the new owner, or before the house was sold, a new owner came in and, and set up new gates. Those are crimes. None of them were reported. They just happened. They happened fleetingly and you, you do something next day to take care of it, but you don't necessarily report it. So maybe that's our problem, but that does happen. A lot of things happen like that which never get reported. The police have been terrific, I think, and they do what they say. They have swept the beach, as far as I can tell. Sometimes late in the evening, you'll see them sweeping the beach and chasing people off the beach. But it's also been reported that half an hour later, the beach is full again, as people who reported. I think the, the parking permit program, although maybe not the complete solution to all the problems described here tonight, gives police and enforcement tool that they don't have right now. If they come down by my neighborhood right now at 2:00 in the morning and the streets are full of people doing whatever people are doing in their cars at that time of the, of the morning, they have no ability to force anything because nobody's doing anything illegal. They're just sitting in their cars. And yet when they leave, they leave behind the evidence that I showed you in the picture. So I support some sort of restriction- So I support some sort of restricted parking control program late in the evenings. We don't want to interfere with anybody's normal use of the beach during more normal hours. But we do think that it's fair to take our neighborhood back after hours at night. Thank you.
My name's John Bonner. I live in 1500 block of the Peninsula Point, and I'm a board member for the association. We've had the police at our board meetings quite a few times, and they've told us of their lack, that they don't have enough officers to support our peninsula. I guess the whole Newport Beach is down officers. Maybe that's a council problem, maybe because of pay, they're not getting paid enough money. That's why we can't get officers. I've heard that through the grapevine. But, you know, they do make their sweep at 10 o'clock.
And we're only laughing because tonight we're voting on a pay increase that makes us the number one paid police department in the county.
Well, good.
I'd love to dispel that rumor, and I hope our officers here will back us up that we have, if not the highest, one of the highest-paid police departments, so it's not a matter of what are we paying up?
Then why are we lacking officers?
Are we?
I was told at our board meeting by the, I don't know, it wasn't this chief, it was another chief, that they had like six officers at our board meeting, and they said they were down four officers, and that was less than a year ago.
This chief has been here for 12?
Well, it was his captain then. Somebody was at our association meeting, there was six officers there.
We'll address that after these comments, if you want us to.
Okay. But, you know, they do make their sweep and, you know, they don't get it, I don't see them getting out of their car that much because my easy chair looks right up the ocean. So I don't see the headlights on the ocean as that much. But my main concern is I think we have, a lot of our problem is the fishermen coming down because the piers closed at 10:00. So they come down, they park on Ocean Boulevard, and they go out on the jetty and they fish. And they're bringing all their trash, besides leaving their trash on the jetty, it's pretty disgusting coming back into our harbor. And that being our Newport Beach beautiful entrance to our harbor and looking at all that trash out on the jetty. Is City of Newport Beach in charge of that jetty, or is that Coastal Commission that jetty?
It's just...
City? Couldn't we chain link it?
The city doesn't recharge it, but the Coastal Commission tells us what we can do in the coastal zone.
Couldn't we chain link it to where they couldn't go out there? And then they wouldn't, we wouldn't have so much cars on Ocean Boulevard? We wouldn't have so many fishermen out there? And we wouldn't have so much trash? Maybe look at that angle also. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we're just about out of time here. I'm going to make this the last speaker.
My name is W.R. Dilding. I'm a board member of the Central Newport Beach Community Association. I am the only board member that represents that area past 8th Street to the east. I have been a property owner here since '64. I'm down in the Bellboe specific plan, in the old part of Newport Beach. Many legal, non-conforming units and my, and very few full-time residents. In 300 foot of my house, I bet I can show you 30 units that have no onsite parking. There are many units that the parking that was originally on the plans and whatnot is not being used for parking. And maybe Mr. Webb will come out of retirement and come down and help code enforcement and Robin enforce some of these issues. The problem that I see today in that area, and I've had neighbors come to me, I've taken it to our board, haven't had that much as Louise Funenberg, our president, alluded to, but it's gotten severe. It's the fishermen, the Catalina people. When I sit on my balcony on Friday morning and see people pull up, park, unload their cars with all their gear, and come back, and I walk out at 6:00 Sunday night and they've returned from Catalina. Now, I don't know, some kind of arrangements can be made in that area with the Catalina Flyer people, where they can get some kind of a discount or something to use the city parking lot. And the other one is during the daytime, employees that are coming down and parking in our area. The Ruby employees, they're parking, and this goes down almost to your fire station. And, you know, if you come down there, and I've been going to come to you and say, we need the lines like you have in West Newport in the alleys because access to getting into the alleys is miserable because people have to park there. Because there's no place else to park, that the problem would be a heck of a lot worse. The reason to come tonight, if you're going to get into something like this, these two areas have their problems, I recognize that, but there are other problems in the city. And all I can, in closing, I'd like to say that I apologize to the city for any inconvenience that I caused during the mid-'50s down at Corona Del Mar or here on the beaches. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to, I saw Dick Barker get up, and Dick's the president of the Peninsula Point Association, so I'm going to add one more to the list here to get his input, our past president. Thank you.
Mayor and council, I would just like to hurry along. I have pictures also of graffiti and parking, et cetera, disregard of law. And I just want to pass that on. The reason why the idea of the parking permit came forward was the fact that the police were ineffective in doing, it's impossible to scan the beaches, to get everybody moving because they come right back on. The parking permits, people have to drive to the area to get out and then go onto the beach. This is one way where it's all confined, the cars are all on the street, you can see whether they have a parking permit or they don't have a parking permit. It was really the ease to police or to enforce that this idea came forward. So more, more police enforcement or use a parking permit idea to try it. That's, that's all we ask. Thank you.
Thank you. And that, all in the public comment section of this study session. Councilman Curry.
When I and others asked to have this hearing, it was because of the letters and the stories that we had heard from many of you. And I'll be the first to say that if there's a community consensus, I would support a parking program. I think we heard today that there is not yet a consensus. And I, I would suggest, Mr. Mayor, that we have a community outreach to determine whether a consensus really exists. And it may exist in one neighborhood and not the other, with the full knowledge of all of the information that staff presented. And I think Dennis Baker made a very good point, to be careful about what you wish for because of the concerns with the Coastal Commission. But if there is a consensus in the community, I would support that. But I have to tell you though, sitting here listening to this, testimony from two of the most desirable and affluent neighborhoods in America. It is appalling what's going on in our community. And I'll tell you this, whatever we think we're doing to address this problem is not working, and that needs to change tonight. And we need to step up enforcement in both of these neighborhoods for these type of crimes. When I say step it up, I mean step it up. I mean, the cuffs are out before the gun wrapper hits the ground, Rudy Giuliani-style surge in enforcement to address these issues. Because I got to tell you, you know, we do have, or will have, the best paid police force in Orange County. And by golly, we need to use them to make these problems, to address these problems, and to ensure the quality of life that all of us live here for. This is just an appalling situation that cannot be allowed to continue. Thank you.
Councilwoman Daigle.
I do support the program. I heard your concerns last fall, and I heard them here again tonight, and I see them in the 200 signature petition. And I think that if there is agreement to move forward with, to the Coastal Commission, I think we need to have statistics that look at residential area to residential area. Don't hear these complaints from Bell Court and Big Canyon, some of those areas. And I also think that to maximize our chances, because we can anticipate that we will be met with skepticism by the coastal staff, that we retain a lobbyist to work at the commission level so that we maximize our opportunity, maximize possibility of getting this through. So I support the program. I don't know if there's others that do, but I think particularly on Corona Del Mar, we need to move forward with it. Thank you.
Councilwoman Gardner.
It's, I think we're trying to overs, we are oversimplifying it with the permit parking. That is not going to solve our problems. Now, that doesn't mean that we don't need to continue to look at it. But from what I'm hearing, if we're talking about gangs and we're talking about guns, you know, are they going to care that they get a ticket? I mean, Ocean Boulevard will be easy because when I walk along Ocean Boulevard, there aren't a lot of cars parked out there from residents. I mean, you guys really use your garages for what they're designed for. But you grew up on my block of Jasmine, and good luck even finding a parking place at night, whether you got a permit or not. That, so somebody comes and drives up on Jasmine and sees somebody, sees a car, and they ticket them. That doesn't help if someone's calling, he's not getting a response in the time he feels when he or she is threatened or something is taking place. So I'm really thinking we need the enforcement and we need that surge of really focusing on these areas for a while and putting more resources. And I think, how are you going to talk to us about whether we did have adequate numbers of police or not?
If you'd like to do that, I mean, we could have the chief address where we are as far as our numbers.
Well, you know what? Why don't we hear from the council first? Let's finish the council and then we'll go to that.
So I'd like to ratify Councilman Curry's idea about surge of police enforcement here. I think that is a very visible way to make the point we need to make. I also believe we need to move ahead right away and with as much enthusiasm as we can analyzing this parking permit idea. And we very first must identify the mandate from the citizens. We need to be able to briefly describe what a program would look like and make sure that we hear from a complete cross-section of the affected citizens before we actually take the next step and formulate a submission to the Coastal Commission. But I think we should move ahead right away to get past those first initial hurdles. Formulate a plan, make sure we get the citizen mandate that we think we have, but let's verify that we have that.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Well, I'm not going to repeat what Councilman Curry and Councilman Henset said. I agree with them, as well as Councilwoman Daigle. The only thing I'm going to suggest here is that I think that maybe we can use a postcard vote like we do with assessment districts to try and ascertain the support. I think there probably is going to be a split of opinion on this so we can see how much support there really is. And probably what we would need to do is develop some kind of a pro forma program that people can look at before they, you know, cast their, cast their vote in the postcard vote. So there just isn't yes or no on the simple question of, are you in favor, not in favor, of restricted parking, but give them some idea what the program would look like. And, and then, you know, all the other things everyone else has mentioned here, I, in terms of getting the statistical data and all of that, I think we need to do that as well. But I think we definitely have to move ahead on both fronts. You just can't assume that the decal parking is going to solve the problems. It's going to have to be a combination of both, increased enforcement and the decal parking. That's my web.
As I listen to the comments tonight, I think there was one or two people from the Bellboe Peninsula that said that they'd like to have a permit parking program. So I really, and I've had several phone calls from people that I know on the peninsula that have said, please don't put permit parking in the peninsula. Their comments really have tied into if there's a possibility of increasing the enforcement or beach patrols, that that would solve their problems. As I listen to the Corona Del Mar issues, my engineering mind listens to what's happening, and I can't really tie in the parking permits to all of the various different things that are going on. It seems like to me that is a very serious enforcement problem and that we need to figure out a way to get more police there more of the time of the night. As far as the issue related to the parking control officers, two parking control officers, one, I was under the impression we were just talking about two. That's seven days a week, and that means they're not always going to have two parking control officers. There would only be one on per night. So you would only have one parking control officer to handle both areas. If, so from my standpoint, I don't think that we should proceed forward with a parking permit program on the peninsula, but we still need to listen to our citizens related to the enforcement issues. As far as Corona Del Mar is concerned, I think that you really, the postcard survey that Mr. Selish has mentioned might possibly work, but we need to explain to those people all of the various different things they're going to have to do and be forced to do if they have a permit parking program. But still, I think the enforcement issue, I mean, the presence of the police there, and I don't know whether we need to have a walking patrol policeman there patrolling it all the time or not. That seems like a tremendous expense, too. But we, we need to do something to cut down on the problems that the people are having. I agree. Mike, as a resident of the peninsula, I do not want to make the assumption that there is not a mandate on the peninsula. If we're going to do, if we're going to do a survey, we should survey both areas. Let's find out the facts for sure here.
Okay, well, we've kind of overextended our time here, so I'm going to give an opportunity for the lieutenant, or chief, no, well, is the chief going to come forward? Chief McDonald to come forward and enlighten us on their enforcement in those two areas.
Well, first of all, yeah, it's no surprise. I mean, you know, we have a tremendous amount of visitors to this beach area, especially the Corona Del Mar beach area. Our fire department estimates about 635,000 in 2005 to 780,000 in 2006. So, you know, there is going to be problems generated by, you know, those numbers of people, that's clear. In terms of our calls for service and people's experience with the police department, you know, we have all our calls for service posted on our website. As soon as the call closes, the call goes up on the website. You can see, you know, what the call was and who responded and what the disposition was. And, you know, we've heard some anecdotal discussion about, you know, our response time to a particular call. And clearly, it is our obligation to prioritize calls. If there's, if there's a burglary occurring or a fight in progress in some other part of town, as opposed to a noise complaint from another part of town, and we have a limited number of resources depending on other activities, we've got to prioritize the calls. But, you know, our experience and our response times are excellent in this community. We have got response times that most communities envy across the state. That doesn't mean that on occasion, there's not a prolonged response to a particular call. And I guess what I would suggest is that if, in fact, someone experiences that, there's a couple avenues. One, you can check the website and ensure that we respond, because not all the time do we contact people. If it's a complaint of a suspicious person, you know, walking around a particular area, the officer will go, he'll look, he'll determine if they're there, and if not, he'll clear the call. But that'll be recorded on the website. Then I would suggest they contact the watch commander on duty, who's always available to respond to a concern that, what was the response time? If they're not satisfied there, either the patrol captain, who spoke Captain Klein, my office, be happy to give them the very specifics on when the call was made. All our calls are recorded, all the dialogue, all of the radio traffics are recorded. It's very easy to document, you know, when, what time the call came in, what were the circumstances, and who responded, how long it took them, et cetera. We can, we can get that in a heartbeat. So I would encourage people to do that. Quite honestly, one of the other problems is that we are not getting the calls, you know, from the residents, for a variety of reasons. It's inconvenient to, you know, to get up, make the call if they hear the noises, et cetera. We are not omnipresent. We cannot be everywhere. And so we depend on the residents to call us. The more they call, the more it draws us down into a particular neighborhood. So, you know, I'm asking for business, you know, make those calls because it helps us, you know, determine if, in fact, there's a problem. You know, we provided council a very detailed report on exactly what we've experienced in terms of those numbers, you know, and even further refine those numbers that have occurred between 10:00 at night and 6:00 in the morning. And those numbers are very small. That's not to say there's no other incidents occurring, but we're not getting those reports. And in most cases, at least in the Part I crimes, I would suggest we would get those reports because they're serious crimes. They are the most serious crimes. So clearly, you know, we've got a perception that there's a problem and a piece of a reality that's a problem. But I think working with the residents, we can address it. In terms of our staffing, we're about three, three positions down right now, which is not unusual. We have...
Out of how many?
Out of a total of 148 sworn. So, I mean, that is, you know, not very many in terms of vacancies. And every year, we have resignations due to retirements, et cetera, especially at the end of the year. And so we, you know, we're staffing up. We have about 10 people in training. We have about 10 people in training currently. Three of those will be out next month. All 10 will be out by July, by summer. So, I mean, that's not atypical for a police department, so we're not having a difficult time staffing. Probably a couple of years ago, you know, we had some difficulty in terms of recruiting and staffing, because it's a very competitive, you know, business out there. You have departments offering $10,000 signing bonuses, et cetera, who are very, having great difficulty. We did assign someone as a recruiting officer, and that has turned it around for us over the last couple of years, so we've addressed those issues. So I guess I would just encourage people to, one, cooperate with us, make those calls. If they're not satisfied, I want to know about it. I want, you know, the watch commander to know about it immediately. If they don't feel that they got satisfaction there, then they need to contact the patrol captain or me personally, my office, and we will get them the answers in terms of why we didn't get there in a timely fashion. But clearly, you know, we have dedicated resources. In fact, Captain Klein was just telling me anecdotally, we assigned a couple of people to do a foot patrol out there between 10:00 and 2:00 on several nights in a past week, and they contacted four people. So you're not talking about great numbers. And to essentially reiterate what several people have said, we had 100,000 parking citations in this city a year. I mean, clearly, we're writing to people, you know, good people who just decide it's worth the parking citation because parking's at a premium in this city to take a risk. You know, the kind of people that are committing crimes in an area, they could give a rat about getting a parking citation. That's the last thing on their mind. You know, obviously, they're doing much more, you know, serious things than being worried about getting a parking citation. So I don't want to mislead people that that, you know, having a permit parking program is going to deter someone who's down there to commit a criminal act. It isn't going to happen, you know. You might get some people on the fringe, but the real serious offenders are not going to pay any attention to a permit parking program. You know, we can deal with those people in conjunction with the residents. We have. And in fact, when you look at the numbers that we provided you, the majority of the Part II offenses specifically, which are the drunkenness, the drug violations, the drunk driving, those kinds of things, were officer-initiated activity. We were down there, we bagged them, we carted them off, took them to jail. They weren't, you know, calls that came in for the residents. We need those calls.
Thank you, chief. All right, we're just about out of time here. I preserved my comments till the end, and I think we've heard from a lot of people, from both the Peninsula Point, from Corona Del Mar. I haven't seen a clear consensus, certainly on the Peninsula and even in Corona Del Mar, but I think there is a consensus, if I can kind of sum up for the council here, that we can take a little harder look at the enforcement issue, maybe beef up enforcement, work on maybe newer, better ways to be more effective enforcing the curfew and the beach closure, and people that come from out of the area that don't belong down there are doing things that are not appropriate, certainly. As far as the permit question, you know, I hear a call here for voting and things like that. To me, that's a slippery slope because if people are voting, they, you know, they need to know exactly what they're voting on. And depending on how the program is developed, you know, they may vote one way or may vote another way. So that's going to take a lot of thinking, I think, on the part of the staff. I personally think it would be a good idea to start collecting some of this data in a more efficient manner and a better manner. And I would encourage the residents, all of you here and all of the people who are watching or hear about this through the newspapers, as the chief said, call them. You know, they answer right away, you get the dispatcher, and that's the only way that they're going to really know that there's a problem going on, is, you know, the squeaky wheel. That's the way it is. And so we will be, I believe, looking at this problem some more. I'm expecting that staff will come back to us with something as far as, you know, a program that maybe we can institute. But as I said, when we started this evening, we're not deciding anything tonight. We don't have a program in front of us to vote on or to discuss in detail, and so that will have to come at a later meeting. Thank you. Yeah, is, well, before you go, is that a 911 call, chief, or just the general number call, the 644...
3717.
644-3717.
Unless it is an emergency.
Yeah, if you're, if you see a crime in process or something like that, it's emergency, or you're being personally attacked, I would recommend 911. Thank you. We're adjourned till 7:00 o'clock.